Good evening. It's seven o'clock, and I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order, but first we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
He's on his way.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item is approval of the minutes of November 7th, 2016.
I'll make the second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any additions or corrections? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't see any. Petitions and communications, I have one from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, who do not wish to speak, but ask that their position be entered into the record as continually concerned with the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem.
So...
Yes, Eric?
So I'd just like to put into the public record a communication from one of my constituents, Naomi Jacobson, urging Urbana to seriously consider becoming a sanctuary city in the light of, you know, potential threats to, and so I would hope that we would put a serious discussion of that on the agenda in the near future.
Did you get my email?
I did get your email.
Okay.
So, yes, and I received email from multiple people, I should acknowledge, and those have been really illuminating to me, and illuminating and encouraging, and so I look forward to the more extensive discussion.
Okay, we did, the Urbana City Council in 1986 did pass a resolution upholding the United States Refugee Act of 1980, and so I've always told people that we are a city of refuge.
Yeah.
Although the only refugees I've had to deal with directly were legislators from Indiana, but I did welcome them and said, you know, we were open for other people, but we do have a lot of people that are concerned about what's going on. I just got back from a meeting at Urbana Middle School that started at six o'clock about people, mostly Latino people, who are concerned about immigration issues, and so Chief Connolly was there, and Adam Chacon was translating into Spanish, and Alex Batista can speak Spanish, so he was talking about what Urbana's protections are. And also, I'm told the people there that in 2012, the Champagne County Sheriff said that he would not be arresting people simply, and taking them to jail simply on an immigration thing, they'd have to have committed a crime. So I'm sure we will have a long discussion about this, it's going to be a pretty hot issue, and major cities in the United States are sanctuary cities, that includes Chicago, New York, Los Angeles, and San Francisco, just to name some of the big ones. Anyone else want to address the Urbana City Council? The librarian?
An update for you on some of the great things happening in the library. We've got lots to do today, so we'll keep this short and sweet, but exciting, because there's lots of exciting stuff happening. We started a 3D science collection that has been checking out like hotcakes. There are different globes of different planets, the moon, things like that, human anatomy models, you can check out teeth and take a look at healthy teeth on one side and not-so-healthy teeth on the other side, models of the brain, we've got microscopes, little digital microscope, you can take pictures, which we clear off before the checkout to the next person. Telescopes have been very popular, and then of course binoculars as well. This is made possible by a generous donation of Glenna Spitzey in honor of her daughter, Megan Spitzey, and this was money held by the foundation over a period of years, so it accumulated to a place where we could make a substantial purchase of about $3,500 worth of materials that we're now checking out, that people are very excited about. We've already had a couple of tweets by patrons that started checking them out. Someone was the first person to check out the telescope and tweeted that that was a picture of the moon he took using our telescope, and then someone else got the globe and tweeted that. So you really can get the world and beyond at the library.
Okay.
Also, we just started checking out tablets and Chromebooks. Laptops are forthcoming within the next month, so if you go to the second floor reference desk or the question desk on the first floor, you can check out tablets preloaded with kids' games, so they can play with those at the library, or again Chromebooks and laptops soon. So you can use Wi-Fi in the library even if you don't have a portable computer yourself, and that's important in this time of the digital divide, we want to make sure that people have the flexibility to use the library in the different ways that work for them. We have a new little free library that opened up about a month and a half ago, just across the street on the south side of Green Street. It is being, books are donated and received by the Friends, and we're stocking it, and that's a person from the Friends stocking the book. It's also one of those little free libraries that's a give-a-book-take-a-book, so we're finding that members of the public are giving books as well. And the picture on the left is the Friends member stocking it for the very first time, and the picture on the right is about 10 minutes later, after the grand opening happened, everybody went away except this mom and her son who came up and opened it up and started taking books, which is exactly what we want to see happening. So we're seeing this as being, the Friends are monitoring it, but it's being pretty much self-sustaining now, six weeks in, so we're excited about that. And this lovely note was left to us. It says, "Dear librarians, thank you for putting this out here. It can help a lot of people. I come to it almost every day. Thank you." Oh, shoot, I can't read it in this angle. "You will see me in the library all the time. I have brown curly hair and I..." I know she dresses cute. And she's got the cutest clothes, is what it says. "I love to read." And she left us a whole stack of bookmarks she made that said bookmark on them, and they're in the little free library, so other people can enjoy them as well. So our patrons are really responding very positively to the things we're doing that we hope they're excited about, and it's very rewarding to see how well things are being received. Coming soon, we just received today, it's not even out of the bag, a charging unit, so if you want to charge your laptop or your phone in the library and you don't have your chargers with you, you don't have to sit next to a plug in the wall, you're going to be able to go to a station in the library and put it in this locker, and then lock it up and be able to charge it while you step away, go to the restroom, or something like that if you'd like. So this is coming within the next month, six weeks. Coming soon, in about the same timeframe, we have guitars, amps, a drum pad, maybe ukuleles, haven't been purchased yet, but maybe. This is going to be exciting, we know this is a community that loves music. Maybe a banjo? That's my first banjo request. And then coming also, hands-on science kits for the younger set, sewing machines, we have two sewing machines purchased, we have one of these physics machines where you can either emboss or cut out fabric or paper to do different types of crafting, as well as a whole bunch of templates, sewing machines, video games, and then a VHS to DVD converter and more. So there's the beautiful library. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
Seeing the front steps reminds me, reminds me that they are going to need some work. Where are things at on raising enough money to do the, or to stabilize the front steps?
We have prioritized the HVAC system, and are looking at, the board voted to replace the boiler, and so we're working on the RFP process for that. The porch is still stable. We had a brief evaluation, we got a quote for what it would take to really evaluate it and draw schematics and lay it up together, but we're prioritizing with workflow being what it is, the HVAC system first. So this will probably get picked up later in the, later in the winter, early spring. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we'll move on. Unfinished business, I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole, Bill?
Yep, we met last week and forwarded two resolutions and ordinance to council for approval. First is Resolution Number 2016-11-066R, Resolution to Support the Establishment of a Property-Assessed Clean Energy Pace Program for Commercial Properties Intervalent Illinois. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Charlie?
Actually, the, there was a memo that came with this from Scott Test and Bill Gray. Thank you for the details on answering our questions. There is a small correction, or a small addition amendment that was added, so I would suggest that we adopt the, or adopt the amended version here.
Is that a friendly amendment to the?
Yes. Second degrees.
Okay. All right, all those, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Next is Resolution Number 2016-11-067R, a resolution estimating the tax levy for this for year 2016 to 2017. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe.
My microphone wasn't on.
Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries.
Next is Ordinance Number 2016-11-108, an ordinance of the City of Urbana, Champagne County, Illinois, removing a certain property from the downtown Urbana Tax and redevelopment project area number two. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Are there any reports of special committees? Reports of officers? I have a report. I went to a conference in New York City on Monday and Tuesday last week, and it was about mental health. It was spearheaded by the First Lady of New York City. She had talked to the U.S. Conference of Mayors last summer in Indianapolis, and said that she knew that her parents both suffered from depression, and her daughter started to get some problems in college, and so the parents were looking for, where can they go to get some help for their daughter? And they finally got referrals and everything, and got her the help that she needed, but she thought to herself that this is really a problem, if I don't know how to get help, what about everybody else? So she decided to make mental health be her big project as First Lady of New York City, and she's held a number of meetings around the city with large groups of people, asking the question of the audience, raise your hand if you have nobody in your family or you don't know anyone who has a mental health problem. And no one would raise their hand. So it's a huge issue, and this meeting was to put together a coalition of cities to work on the issue. I think we can do a better job in this country than we have been doing, and it starts with very young children, and we had one of the speakers from Seattle, works at, he's at the University of Washington, and they've done some research, and they've done control schools in the public schools in Seattle, and other schools that got the tested methods for trying to get children to avoid problems, and the schools that got the help had a significant decrease in problems. So I think when we see some of these issues, like the epidemic of shootings, which has even gotten to our cities, these are problems of people who don't know how to deal with difficulties, they don't know how to deal with settling problems any other way than by violence, and I think we have to deal with that. You know, young children, and we just have to have a really good public discussion on the best way to approach this. So I signed us up, in case anybody wants to, you know, have us not sign up, but I think I have a number of cities that we can involve in this, and I think that cities are really going to take a big lead in a number of issues in the next four years. I know that historically, it was cities in the world that took the issue on climate change, and I can see that we're probably going to take the issue on mental health too. Anybody have a question for me? Aaron?
Not necessarily a question, but somewhat of a comment, because I definitely can, I think it's a very sensitive and very important issue. Certainly, my family has been touched by it as well. Some of you might be aware of that already, but I do think that there's, I don't know, I'm a little concerned about saying that people would have mental health issues if they can't solve problems without resorting to violence. That would suggest that America is, has mental health problems. So, I mean, I just think that we have, which may be true, I mean, you know, just leave...
It is true.
Right, yeah, we're all nodding our heads, yeah. I just, you know...
Nobody's disagreeing with you.
Well, if as long as nobody disagrees, then I'm okay with the statement then, right?
Okay.
I...
Eric?
So, I agree completely with the importance of this, and I think, in addition to, you know, the community outreach, I really believe that we ought to have an intensive mental health effort for people who come in contact with the criminal justice system. I think that we ought to have a goal that anybody who's incarcerated, who has a mental health issue, ought to leave better than that individual came in. And now, in our area, formally, this is primarily an issue for the county, because the county runs the jail and so forth, but I would really like to find some way for us to effectively weigh in on this and work towards an effective, you know, effective evaluation and treatment of people who come into contact with criminal justice system.
Well, I think we have a lot of examples of how the cities and the university and the county have worked together on issues, and so that's what the vision of this is, is that we're going to have a discussion around the country and come up with what works and what doesn't work, and of course, how to pay for it. And I think there was a referendum question in Oklahoma where they were going to use the savings on not incarcerating people and use it for mental health. I have to get copies of the actual question, but this discussion is going on, and there's a lot of creative ideas coming up around the whole country. So anyway, anybody else have any other reports of officers? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We have ordinance Number 2016-11-109, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow access drives that are up to 54% of the lot widths at 3,002 East Rutherford Drive.
While Kevin is setting up, I wanted to introduce our newest planner who will be joining him at the table. This is Marcus Ricci, joining us as a planner too. We're very happy to have him.
Welcome.
Okay, and before we begin, I'd like to thank Marcus. I'm happy to have him as well. He helped out, he wrote the zoning board memo, and also wrote the council memo for tonight that I'll be presenting here. I'm going to try and keep this pretty brief. There's more details in your memo, and I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any. Also, the engineer representing the applicant is here as well and can answer questions. So Ivan Richardson is, has proposed to subdivide Lot 452 of Berenger Commons, Number Four, into 12 lots to include 11 townhomes and one model unit, and that subdivision request is going to be coming to the council at the next Committee of the Whole meeting next week. Our zoning ordinance allows access drives, also known as driveways, to be up to 45% of the width of a lot, and the proposed access drive, access drives for seven of the lots in this proposed subdivision would be, or sorry, they're all 27 feet wide. For seven of them, it would push them over the threshold of 45% by three, 3 to 9%. And since that's more than we allow, Mr. Richardson is making this variance request. On November 16th, the zoning board heard this case, and they voted five to zero in favor of forwarding the request to the city council with a recommendation for approval with certain conditions that you'll find at the end of your memo. So just a little background, Berenger Commons, as most of you probably know, it was annexed into the city in the early 90s, and it, the initial development phase took place back in the early to mid 1990s. There were a couple more phases that sort of slowed with the recession in 2007 and 2008, and recently with the economy recovering, and also with the Think Urbana program, there's really an opportunity to continue the build-out of Berenger Commons, and that's why the applicant, pardon me, the applicant is preparing to subdivide and then to develop these lots. Mr. Richardson's market research indicates that the lots would be most marketable if they have three-car garages, and hence proposes to have 27-foot-wide access drives so that they can, so that residents can access the entire width of the garage. I'd like to point out that adjacent lots in Berenger Commons are quite similar in their front yards. Some of them have driveways that are 18 feet wide, that, or sorry, and that's 60% of the lot width. So granting the request, or the requested variance would be, would allow development that's compatible with the existing neighborhood character. I'm not going to go through all of the variance criteria, those are discussed in the memo in detail, they were also discussed at the zoning board, but I would like to point out that the zoning board found that the request met the criteria. So in this case, the city council has three options. The council can approve the variance, the council can approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, or the council can deny the variance. As I mentioned, at the zoning board meeting, they voted five to zero to recommend approval for the variance with conditions that you can see on page five of your memo, and those are briefly, that the associated replat of Lot 452 is approved, that the site is developed in general conformance with the attached proposed site plan, and that the impacts caused by the additional pavement width are minimized on each lot by either tapering the area of added width to the extent possible, or using permeable paving materials wherever possible. Staff concurs with the ZBA recommendation, and I will take any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Charlie, and then Eric?
Yeah, I regularly go by this empty lot, so very supportive of seeing it built out, glad that our Think Urbana is program and the Enterprise Zone stuff is coming to fruition here, so I have no problem with this. I do like the recommendations of using permeable paving material and the tapering, I think those are great additions here, so I'll be very supportive of this.
Eric?
I'm not an expert on paving materials, but I understand that under some circumstances, permeable materials are appropriate, and there are other circumstances where it's not, and I'm certainly not qualified to have a judgment about this particular site, but I guess I would urge that the developer, you know, work with Public Works to ascertain whether or not permeable pavement is appropriate for this particular site, unless that's already been done, and we have expert opinion that it is.
I think on that point, I could defer to the engineer for Mr. Richardson, because he is present, so he would know more about the permeable paving question than...
And just to make a clarification, we were, provided these as options, that would be up to the developer to make, so they could make the determination during final engineering.
Okay.
Dennis?
Will this be the first set of buildings in Berenger Commons that would have three-car garages?
No, if you look, let's see, I know there are, let's see, well, I know that this lot right here, if you look on your screen, I know this has a three-car garage, and that's just to the south of the site, and it looks like all the lots are similar in size and configuration on that stretch. Right, this one's a little wider, because it's sort of that corner lot.
I see.
And then these lots here are quite a bit narrower than the proposed lots, these are all 30 feet wide, and then these, the driveways here are 18 feet wide.
Okay, I'll just make the comment that it's, I look in the future for developers and architects who can solve parking without making the entire front of the house a garage. I don't think that's an aesthetic that is going to be sustained in the long run in the community, and I think, you know, hopefully thoughtful, thoughtful planning would avoid these kinds of decisions where the entire facade of a home is really basically a garage. When the garage doors are open, it's not as attractive as it could be, and I guess I'm wondering about the conclusion that three-car garages were indeed the sailing point for the home, but that's a conversation that I'm just going to wonder about for the future.
Diane?
I went out to Berenger Commons this morning and looked at the street. Couple of observations, one is on the, the street itself, Rutherford Drive, is narrow, so there's no parking at all on the street, there's no parking on the west side, and the driveways are so close together on the east side that there's no parking on that side either. So there literally is no street parking at all on this whole stretch here. Three-car garages, from my, from what I've observed, often aren't used for cars, it's where people store their stuff, and if you don't have a basement, it's going to be in your garage. So, so these aren't necessarily for vehicles, they're for, they're for storage. My observation on this, on these conditions, I kind of agreed with Joanne Chester's observation in the minutes of the, from the meeting, who she pointed out that number one, permeable pavement on these driveways really isn't going to affect the runoff from these properties at all, and number two, if you taper the driveway, people will run off the driveway into the grass anyway. So I guess my reaction was, why have these, why have condition number three there at all when it seems to be an option anyway, and it's not a requirement, and it's more symbolic than actually useful? So I support the variance either way, but I would be just as happy to support it without condition number three. The lots have been empty for 15 years, building these 11 units aren't really going to change the character of the neighborhood, and it just didn't seem like the conditions actually made a difference. And I, you know, if you're going to put conditions on a variance, they should, they should mean something, really, and in this case, I don't see where they're going to make much of a difference, so. So I would, I mean, like I said, I'll support it either way, I just kind of agree with Joanne Chester on this one.
Eric?
So I move to reflect, I mean, at first I was saying, three-car garages, but I guess it's really the new family. It's the parents and the 20-something kid who hasn't moved out yet, and then when the kid moves out, then you put all the stuff that the kid left in the space where his or her car used to be.
Charlie?
Yeah, and maybe the engine, Mr., is it Friend? Yeah, can answer some of this too, but I believe the way these houses are configured, the front actually faces the lake, sort of, isn't that, a lot of these have more of formal, they sort of flipped around, and you're seeing the back of the house, some of them seem to have two fronts. When I've gone by, and you see the backs of a lot of the houses that look over the lake, the backs of the houses...
the backs of the houses are as fancy as the fronts on the, in the houses. But I thought, I thought these condos longer had a, had a, sort of a more, a look towards the, over the lake as opposed to out the back, out the garage.
Yeah, my name is Mike Friend from the Farnsworth Group here in town. And I want to begin by acknowledging that you guys' staff was, has been great to work with. It's the first opportunity I've had to do that, and it's been fantastic. And so, yeah, so you're, the question with regard to the, the actual structural layout, sir. You know, you're correct. If you take a look, I believe, there, there's a couple of drawings, and one of them does have a floor plan on it. It's reduced size. It might be a little bit difficult to see. And, but it, but, but it does show the general layout. And so the front has got a double garage, you know, with a, a large garage door for two vehicles. And then there's a smaller eight-foot one. And then there is a sidewalk with the entrance in the front of the house. The rear of the home does face out onto the detention basin. And, you know, there's, there's a room there that is designed to have a view of the lake, and then there's a patio in the back as well. There will be a commons area that is similar to the development to the south. There will be a commons area that is, that is a rim around the edge of that lake. And so that, that space back there is intended, you know, as you indicated, to be probably the place that you would spend more time. And the view out to the lake and the commons area behind there, from an occupancy standpoint, you're correct in assessing that. So I would, I'd concur, I guess, with your, you know, with your, your assessment there, sir.
Yeah, I guess, and then the other question was the issue of tapering versus permeable and...
Yeah, correct. And so there was a lot of discussion of that matter with this one in Board of Appeals. And, and even interaction with your staff prior. I mean, we made like an initial meeting with Public Works and with the Planning Department, which is really beneficial. And so one of the things that happened there is that the initial proposal was to have these 27-foot drives all the way out to the back of the curb. And then, you know, when there was discussion with your staff, Mr. Richardson said, "Well, how about if we are fully conforming on the right-of-way? So we narrow the driveway on the right-of-way, and we don't begin to widen the driveway until we get past the right-of-way onto the private property," which was a change that was made during the process, initiated by some discussion with staff. And then further, at the meeting, you know, there was discussion about even pushing the taper to just attain the full width to access the garage as close to the unit as possible, which Mr. Richardson said he's great with that. We did have quite a bit of discussion about permeable pavers. We had a little bit of that here tonight as well. But right now, I mean, his direction to me is to, he's in favor of pushing the taper to gain that additional width as close to the building as reasonably possible. So he's got a full width, basically 20 foot from the face of the building, which is about the length of, that you need to allow for a vehicle. So that's probably how that's going to proceed.
Any other questions? Charlie?
I'm ready to move this, move approval.
Second. Okay, motion to approve by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, moving on to appointments. I would like to appoint, I hope I don't mispronounce her name, Nancy Essery-Udrego to the Design Review Board. And then Alex...
So moved, yeah, yeah, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And then I'd like to appoint Alex Batista to replace Todd Rent, who is at a wonderful job in Los Angeles at a UCLA hospital. So we're going to be very sorry to leave, to lose him, but I'm happy for him. I think he got a great job. So Alex will be the interim. I think he'll do a, a great job. And as I pointed out in my memo, these two people have, Alex has replaced Todd. This will be the fourth time that he's done it, so. They're both very well qualified.
Move approval.
Second.
I hope, I hope this doesn't mean that Alex is going to follow him.
That's what I, I hope not, but, you know. The disadvantage of California is they have, their air is not as good as ours, and their commute time is longer. And there are some hoaxes that suggest that those two things are connected. Anyway, I hope he doesn't move, too. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.